Councilor order with a clerk keys called the roll.
Counselor Prom.
Here.
Counselor Owen.
Here.
Counselor Barton Mullins.
Here.
Counselor Quimby.
Here.
Counselor Arnold.
Here.
Mayor Weatherby.
Here. Would you all rise so I lead you in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And welcome, everybody, and now for another exciting evening. First, we have the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I see that there's a piece of paper here at the desk.
Yes.
The change to the consent agenda.
Allen, do you want to get that word changed, Mr. Falopa?
Pardon?
Yeah, it's just a one-word change.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a difference between lower and greater, so not that big of a swing, you know, left or right.
Yeah, this is in terms of the lake versus slough height. And the idea is that, you know, you don't want the slough to be higher than the lake, so the two words were just transposed. So this is just a, we'll fix it in the document and then, you know, we take care of it. Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, then I guess I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the, with the change that we have.
Second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 It is passed unanimously. Oh, and Dan Kriemer is excused. My apologies. Okay. Next, we have the citizens wishing to speak on non-agenda items. I have one, and that is Roxanne Ross. Thank you, Roxanne.
Hello, thank you, counsel, for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Roxanne Ross, and I'm a resident of Gresham. And I'm, I'm here to share with you today some things I learned on April 15th of this year. I went to Salem to testify on House Bill 3316. And the person that testified after me, John Charles Jr., he brought these handouts that he had taken the night before from the TriMet website. And he had shared with, with the subcommittee, or with the committee, rather, that beginning in the year 2017, the revenues were going to begin falling below the expenditures in an ever-increasing gap. Part of this was because they were securitizing and bonding their payroll taxes. And their payroll taxes accounted for about half their operating budget. But the bigger share of it was that for 20 years, they'd been promising their union employees that they would cover their health insurance during their retirement years. And while their workforce was young, that was a very easy promise to make because it seemed to be far out in the future. He shared that a healthy company keeps those unfunded liabilities down to 40% of payroll. Because if you owe a million, but you have a payroll of a million, that's not so big a problem. So they always compare it to payroll. You'll see in the top box on the, on the second page, the, the actuarial value of assets is nothing. The actuarial accrued liability is listed. The unfunded liability is, of course, the same. The funded ratio is zero. And the percentage as compared to payroll is 595%, well beyond prudent. He shared that the, that the cost of implementing, both in capital and in, and operating costs, light rail was more expensive than busing. And yet, even with this gloomy future from page one, they were continuing to pursue light rail down Highway 99 to Sherwood, Portland to Sherwood, down the other Highway 99 to Milwaukee, and also to Vancouver. So that they were not showing prudence in, in collecting greater costs. The third page is the lien debt. So he also shared that there's only, every five years that a city has the option of leaving the TriMet service area. And that five cities have done that, and none of them have chosen, chosen to come back. So we're looking at Wilsonville, Molalla, Candy, Sandy, and Boring. Sandy, incidentally, also provides service with their Sandy Area Metro, SAM, to Estacada as well. Sandy had, for years now, offered no fares. Their payroll tax was less to their businesses. They had no fares, and they offered more stops and more frequent service. Candy offers a lot more service, more frequent service. They do have fares. But their payroll tax is also less than the TriMet payroll tax. I would say that it's a pretty certain bet that the payroll taxes are going to be going up as they're trying to cover this funding gap. And if, if you look at the millions grid on the side, that gap is, is a lot more than you might think at first. So Fairview is serviced currently by two lines that go Monday through Sunday. One goes down Halsey connecting Fairview to Wood Village and to Portland. And the other goes down Sandy Boulevard and 223rd, connecting Fairview to Portland and to the light rail in Gresham. So I just wanted to let you know that the, the times that you'd be able to leave the Sandy Service, or the TriMet Service District, if you chose to do that, would be 2016 and 2021. And 2016 conveniently falls a year before this big fiscal crisis. TriMet doesn't appear to be doing anything about that fiscal crisis that, that I've been aware of in advance of now. So I just wanted to remind you that the businesses in Fairview do not have the choice of whether they pay the payroll tax for TriMet. But as the city council, you have the choice of what transit options work best for your community.
Thank you. I'm well aware of part of the problems. If you saw the package, you'll see a letter that went out and trying to reinstate the Banfield flyer. As first for them to look at that. I've talked with them many times, ever since I've been mayor, and after them to, to work on increasing, not just increasing coverage here, or the service, but also service north of Sandy. So we, we continue to strive, but really appreciate your comments. Seeing no one else, we have administrative reports.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. I'll start off with the council updates from myself and the directors, and then we'll do the, the goals update, if that's okay with you all. So I have a few updates for you. I know that citizens are curious about the property at the corner of, down the street here at Village and Halsey, as well as the comments that we talked about regarding the Sheriff's Building last week, at the last meeting. We have not received any further information on either one of these developments at this time. So we will certainly keep folks informed as, as we hear. My sense with the VA clinic is that the federal government shutdown may impede that, at least that decision perhaps for, for a bit. So we will, if we hear anymore, we'll certainly let everyone know. A reminder that Planning Commission, folks would have got this in their utility bill yesterday, or maybe getting it in the mail today or tomorrow. Planning Commission is seeking citizen input on a riverfront zone. So their first scheduled meeting is October 8th. Their second is October 22nd. Details are available on the city website, or you can contact city staff, and we'll be happy, happy to share that information as well. The Marriage Visioning Committee, as you all recall, they are scheduled to come and submit a report on November 6th at this time. The, on December 31st of 2013, several of our advisory committees will have term, positions whose terms will expire. So we will be advertising in the outlook, as well as on the city website. We'll also advertise in the November 1st newsletter. We'd like to advertise for about 45 days to solicit applications. We also still have a current couple of openings on ASAC, but I know we're looking at changing some language to facilitate filling those more easily. But I want to make sure folks are aware, those are coming up. And we're aiming to have that to council for consideration December 4th, so that you have those positions filled by the end of the year, for starting July 1, or January 1. Let's see. Next meeting, we'll be getting, council will be receiving committee reports, a couple of them. Parks and Rec Advisory Committee will be coming, as well as the Public Safety Advisory Committee. They've requested time before the council. What else? The sidewalk maintenance program is, is a, a big item that we are working on right now. We are currently drafting the application and the operating procedures for that. We'll be doing a press release probably next week. We will begin accepting those applications on Monday, October 21st. And we'll have a publication, a new press release, and a bunch of information on the city website related to that as well. I have reached out to the Village Street folks, HOAs, to meet with them again and work, continue to work with that process with their issues as well. And I just want to remind citizens that if they want to contact the mayor or city council, your emails, your city email addresses are on the city webpage, under City Government, Mayor and City Councils. So just want to remind citizens out there, if they want to contact any of you directly, they can certainly do that, and we encourage them to. And a final update from the last meeting. Angels Addicts owner Barbara Jorgensen came and had some comments. And so her and I are scheduled to meet next Tuesday to review what, what went amiss and what we can do to going forward. So just want to let you know, we did follow up on that, and we are working on that. And that is all I have for you this evening, but I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Yes, Counselor Quimby.
It's my understanding, Sam, that the Park Recreation Committee Chair, Dave Strom, had forwarded PrAC recommendation letter.
Yes, he did. He supplied, he supplied three documents that will be included in that packet for that work session item. When they come before council, he's going to come and speak to council. That's their supporting documentation for that packet.
Okay. I just wondered if that was supposed to come to us ahead of time, or if that was?
I, I can certainly send that out sooner, if you'd like to see it sooner. I just asked for it as part of the, the packet information, because I had originally intended that they, I thought they would be on the, this meeting for this evening, but it was pushed to the 16th. So I just had the information, and I'm just holding it until the 16th. But I'm happy to send that out if you want to see it sooner, absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. And how about Alan Berry?
Good evening, Mayor Weatherby, members of council. Just a quick update. The, the sewer project on Depot Street is getting ready to kick off, so you may start seeing access pits and large lengths of HDP pipe down there. So that will be going on soon. And then, just to reiterate what Samantha said, we will be, the Planning Commission will be doing their information gathering as a precursor to the next joint Planning Commission, council meeting on Riverfront. We have sent notices out to, in the, in the billing cycle, to all residents, and individual letters to all property owners, and direct contact with all affected agencies to let them know to, to be here if they're interested. So that's there. On the next, on the 16th, Erica will be here to do the, the annual update on what we've been doing on economic development. And I think you'll be pleasantly surprised, not to take away some of her thunder, but we thought we'd better give you the heads up about just one of the things we've been working on. As you know, Arata Road is going to be improved as part of the, some of the tip funds, as the state ones, and Sandy as the Metro tip funds. We've been working with the developer, and the property owner, and Multnomah County to try and incorporate some enhancements to the No Name Creek, which will open up development on that lot just to the west of the Bible Church. And also, the Townsend property on the south side of Sandy, which is currently kind of divided into three by that same creek. The property owners are ecstatic. The Multnomah County are quite keen on this. And we met with Metro today to talk about what the, the grant opportunities are. We'll present that in more detail on the 16th, or as things come by. Other things, a nine-lot subdivision on Whistful Vista is in, in the final throes of approval. Whether they'll start this year, or whether they'll wait until the spring. But that's a nine-lot subdivision on the, on the north side. And then last but not least, we've got a pre-application request today from CEMEX to install a concrete patch plant on the Landco property, where Roy Moore's currently sitting. So that's, we'll be meeting with them. That, that means that we'd have actually a concrete-producing plant in Fairview, which would be quite the thing. And then, I guess my last one would be to, they've actually left, but to thank Mike and Jim Gravel. That, that was quite an effort to, to get our Falopa Management Plan Agreement done. It's, and it's going to work. One of the highlights, I'm sure you read, is in terms of our contribution, we used to, it was always looking ahead. We reworked it, so we actually take actual operating costs for the lake, and we pay on those. So it'll be auditable. Into the, the remainder of that is, if you look at the management plan itself, they will present their, the lake management plan. They're going to include that in their annual report when they come for their, you know, on a regular basis. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be pleased to answer them.
Counselor Arnold.
Thank you, Alan. Can you give us an update as to where we're at with the next round of? I know that we are approving today some additional revenue from the county for improvements in Old Town. I'm assuming that's where the CDGB funds will be going. What kind of a timeframe are we on for that completion?
Thank you for reminding me. I didn't, it's on the other side of the paper. Yet we, in fact, they're one of the, one of the things tonight is to, we got a few additional funds, so we're up to, we're close to 80,000, just under. The, the design is almost complete. We're going to do an outreach to the neighbors to make sure that they're okay. But we're, we need, we'll, we're hoping to go out to bid for that within the month. We do need to get, you know, sidewalks can be contentious, not just for repairing them, but whether you want them. So we do want to talk to people about it. But yes, we're actually quite excited about that project because we're putting some stormwater money in it as well, and a little bit of street money to really make that, that area, it'll be, it'll be complete, including access to the Hesslin House.
And the completion date estimate, Alan, spring, or?
Yeah, I, once they start, that's probably six weeks, two, two months, I would say, construction period. So yeah, latest spring.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
And those are all for the directors' reports, if you, unless you have a question for Chief Johnson? Oh, Chief Johnson does have a comment, sorry.
See, you can't resist.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. I wanted to personally invite you to the Fairview Police Department Awards Ceremony. It will be Wednesday, October 30th, at 4:00 PM here in the council chambers. It's been, I think, almost two years since we've had a ceremony. Again, I'll remind you, we will be giving out the highest award ever bestowed upon a Fairview police officer in our history on that evening. And we'll be saying goodbye to Detective Mike Morton, who will be retiring his last day, the 31st.
Did you say four o'clock? I'm sorry.
Four o'clock.
Well, four, okay.
Actually, put that out to a vote of the officers, and it was a significant majority that said they'd rather do it at four than later. I'll be happy to answer any questions. See you none.
Yeah, Counselor Bauton.
Right. We talked about this earlier. Last year, for Halloween, the Village area was absolutely crazy, crazy, crazy. I believe I had 1,500 kids come to our door. And we discussed as a council a little bit about the safety of the children, and we felt that it was getting so big that we needed to start doing something proactive in the Village area to keep the kids safe. I know it hasn't been thought of or brought up again for a year, but here we are. And I'm wondering if you have any ideas, or if you, as a police department, will be doing anything?
We will, as we did, and I think two or three years now in a row, place an officer on overtime special detail for that evening, on the Rhino, in the Village, specifically dedicated to the Village. In addition to that, I know Samantha's reaching out, seeking volunteers as we look at street closures, or, you know, barricading, or what can we do to regulate or change the, the traffic flow? We don't have the staff or personnel in the city to do that. We're looking for volunteers that may be able to help us regulate some of the traffic flow. And she's reaching out to the HOAs. Maybe there's some of your advisory groups that might be able to assist us. Put on a vest, give them a flashlight, and help us regulate, because there are, it's massive.
Yeah, it is. All right, thank you.
Okay, nothing? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At the last council meeting, there was a, a request to, for staff to provide an update regarding the council goals that were discussed earlier this year. So we put together, the management team and I, Ken's hiding back in the corner. We put together the goals and kind of tried to provide as much of an update as we can to date. The first part is, is just a kind of a brief history. We started this process in January, when we first started talking with council. In February, we held the goal session. In March, we, March 1st, about three days, two days, three days after the meeting, we sent out the list to council. We entered it into the permanent record on March 6th. March 13th, we revised the goals and put in some cost estimates, because we had asked for a prioritized list, so that we could prioritize these as we were developing the budget at this time. Several councilors did, did submit them. On April 15th, I sent out a reminder, again, asking for those prioritized lists. The last several years, the council has not formally adopted these, any goals. So we were trying to get this on to the May 1st or May 15th council meeting. However, I didn't receive everything back in order to compile an accurate list, so that did not happen. However, staff went ahead and took the goals as identified, and began to form our budget to include as many of those items as, as we could for the fiscal year 13, 14. So what we have identified here is, you may kind of recognize the color coding. This is similar to what's in, in front of you. And this is the document that we originally presented. So just to kind of give you a brief update on, on each one. Capital improvements that were identified were sidewalks and bike path lanes. To prioritize that in our capital improvement plans. Again, that we are aware of this. We're certainly trying to, to make this a focus as we begin to look at redeveloping our comprehensive, updating our comprehensive plan. The current budget does include funding, obviously, for the CDBG grant. We continue to go out for those. And, but other than that, going forward, we will try to incorporate more of those things. Prioritize curbs and sidewalks. Again, we're continuing that with the CDBG grant improvement in Old Town. Sidewalk safety, proactive code enforcement of sidewalk repair compliance was requested. Council recently adopted this program, so this will go into effect in 30, on August, October 21st, with the first day that that program is, is effective, the 30-day waiting period. Other things, these items are not currently, this first item's not included in the current budget, but it is identified in the transportation and sidewalk plan for the future. Prioritize street crossing safety issues in Old Town, specifically at 7th and Lincoln. Staff is aware, and we're working on opportunities and budget options that we have to pursue this goal in Old Town. We are working, we were asked to coordinate with the county for installation of crosswalks across Halsey and Oakwoods Apartments. That is in process at this time. So that goal is not yet accomplished, but it is in process. We were asked to coordinate with the county for installation of flash and lights at the school zone areas along Halsey Street. This issue is, is being worked on as part of the photo radar test program. And we were working to ensure that regardless of where that program goes, and, you know, sunsets after a year or two years, or whatever that timeframe may be, but that we retain those lights. That is important. Fast-tracking the master planning process for park plan, and specifically to install play equipment as soon as possible. The play equipment has been installed, and the play, the master planning process is pending some further direction from council in regards to some PrAC recommendations that will be coming before you. We were asked to place park sign, name signs at all the parks within the city, identifying them as city parks. All of those have been ordered and received. And so those are being prepared for installation by the public works crew. We were asked to improve signage at I-84 and Fairview Parkway, perhaps to look familiar to the Eastman Parkway signage. That was included in the fiscal year 2013 budget and is either completed or in process.
We waited, the sign has to be finished.
Finished.
The stone work is completed, then there's a, the light, solar power.
What are we looking at for estimated time? Completion?
Probably within the month. The stone work's complete, if you look down there, it's very nice.
I know I signed the bill, but approved the bill for it, so. Solar-powered lighting on Fairview entrance signs, again, for city branding. This was included in 13, 14 budget as well, and that is in process as well. Community, we were asked to reinstate citizen and volunteer recognition event and programs. We've got part of this addressed. The recognition event funding was included in the budget for 13, 14. And we will begin to organize that after January 1st, as we anticipate holding that in the spring. Programs still to be developed for, pending staff to be able to implement them and reach out is to do the, the programs, such as the I Love Fairview, the writing contest, those kind of, those kind of things. Those are the programs we still need to work on. Negotiate or work with local schools to open recreational sites to local youth. Negotiate or work with local schools to open recreational sites to local youth. This is identified as a work item. We have not progressed on this item yet at this time. From economic development, there are several items there identified as goals for council. We were asked to evaluate economic development organizations and choose the best to serve the city in its economic development. We did that. We researched the different groups and actually, through that, and with our focus on the exposure for economic development for Fairview, have opted to join GPI, Gresham Area Chamber, EMI, and the West Columbia Gorge Chamber, who is going through revitalization at this time and really doing some good outreach. That is all to maximize Fairview's exposure to businesses that may want to relocate here. We find that to be a very valuable tool. So that has been completed. Review and change zoning is appropriate for available properties to maximize development. This is an ongoing process. Alan is working on this in regards to the Arata Road project. He's also working with other developers, the Townsend family, regarding some property owned by them. Obviously, the Planning Commission, council met with them to discuss the riverfront zone, and that's being worked on by Planning Commission as well. So this is an ongoing process, and we have several irons in the fire at the moment. Develop incentives for new industrial businesses. This is still on the work item list. We began to look at this item in regards to some different grant-type programs, and we sunsetted it until fall with EDAC. So EDAC will be revisiting these topics in the next month or so. Additionally, we had aggressive economic development, create a full-time economic development position, or reinstate the community development-focused position. This was proposed to council as a decision packet in the budget for 13, 14, and it was voted down by the Budget Committee. So that was not adopted. However, staff has continued to pursue economic development, which Erica will report next week. We need to determine the feasibility of a public-private partnership for development at the Valleys location. We have talked with Valleys. Obviously, they're in the race as well for the VA Clinic, so we are waiting for that kind of process to follow through, and we'll pursue that again. Fiscal responsibility. A question was raised, and a goal was set to evaluate the disposition of excess city property, i.e. our pocket parks. There's a couple other additional lots owned by the city. This is currently in the list of parking lot items for discussion for the council. We've asked for a special work session to address some of these topics that are on the parking lot. We've also were asked to explore and adopt an end fund balance policy to define surplus and what to do with it on an ongoing basis. We had an initial presentation provided to council, and council provided some additional direction in regards to wanting to see that fund balance policy simplified. And so staff has that on our, again, on our parking lot to be readdressed. This is an item that we must address by budget season, so that we are prepared to develop that budget around whatever this policy of the council is. So I anticipate this coming back at the latest, probably January, but it will be before you at the latest, it would be, depends on the holiday scheduling. Public safety. We were asked to determine funding for two officers on duty 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Council restated their commitment to that goal. In that goal, you did authorize through approval of a decision packet, a 15th officer for fiscal year 13, 14, which we have an officer in the academy at this time, is that 15th officer. So we are still working with PrAC. PrAC is exploring, or has explored, different long-term funding mechanisms. We will also keep that in mind as we begin to put our budget together for the future, for next year, looking at where our resources are and what we're doing as an organization. So that are, those were the goals. In summary, although we did not receive, you know, all the rankings, we did, staff did go forth and include as many of those as we could into the current budget, and pursue grant requests as well to support the ones that we do not have included this year. We anticipate doing a follow-up status report to be presented in February as we begin our next goal-setting session, because we will need that goal-setting session as we begin to draft the budget for fiscal year 14, 15 in February. It doesn't seem that far away, but we will be starting that process very, very quickly. And the directors are here as well, who work on these projects with me, so if you have any questions, we are happy to answer them.
Councilor Arnold.
Thank you guys very much for putting this together. I think it's really helpful. And the way my mind works, I'm very driven for results. And so my recommendation or request would be, is let's do this more often. Let's do this more often in the form of perhaps even an email, a monthly update, a status report as to how we're doing, because I really want to make sure that we get accomplished what we wanted to do in a timely manner. And to that end, I'd like to recommend also, perhaps, that we have councilors who are passionate about some of these items, also work with the city and kind of help spearhead these ideas. Mayor?
Well, that's something we could look at. I hadn't thought about that before. Okay, Councilor Prom.
Yes, in regards to the flashing light program for school zones, you talked about potential with the test of Fairview as a test city, but what about down at the MLS Charter School? Were you talking about flashing lights there too for crosswalk?
You're talking about near the Fairview Oaks and Woods? Yeah. Yeah, that crossing is in the Arata Road project for work on next spring.
Alan, when is the county, would you let me know when the county is supposed to be putting in that crosswalk from the Oaks and Woods across to allow people to get up to Fred Meyer's?
That's this one.
Oh, that's this one?
Yeah. It's basically to get connectivity up from Fairview Oaks and Woods through.
And that's in the spring? I was told it was going to be done this.
It's part of the, it's part of the Arata Road project, and what happens to those funds, they, when they come available, they get scheduled. Right now, it's in the spring. And I believe it does have a flashing yellow light. Ralph verified that.
Okay, yes. Councilor Owen.
I just wanted to say Samantha and all, thank you tonight for providing this update. I know we, as a council, at least, a number of us up here did not, it looks like three out of the seven actually provided you a force ranking. But the fact that you're able to take that and incorporate a lot of these activities into the budget seems to have made a big difference as it relates to the things that either you've already completed, or things that are to be completed, you know, I guess at a later date. And the fact that you have a parking lot, I know that there have been a lot of activities this year. There's been a lot of things to keep staff busy. So as I sit and reflect back on these goals, I think you should all feel like you've made a major accomplishment in working through these and knocking some of them down with the limited amount of time you've had. So it's always good for us to have this opportunity for you to share and let us know where you're at, and if you have anything that maybe you're hung up on, I guess it kind of puts all of us up here in a situation that if we have questions or concerns, that we, you know, address those during our weekly, or monthly, or whatever the amount of time is that we get with you to become engaged and try to track the stuff. So this really looks good. I think you should all hold your head really high for what you've accomplished so far. And I think that, you know, as we do this going forward, we take these items, or maybe new items, and, you know, work those into the budget next time. So, thank you.
I want to add to, this is the first time since I've been mayor that we've had, that the city administrator, any city administrator has come before council and accepted the end of the year and say, "Well, I guess we got some done, some we didn't, but even though I had asked it." Anyway, this is great. And I think that Councilor Arnold is right, maybe with the remaining items that are left, if we could have maybe something on emails that would say where we are going with those, so that we'll have some way of keeping track. Great. Thank you. Very good. Anything else, Sam?
That's it for us.
Okay. Next is mayor comments, committee reports, et cetera. Councilor Arnold.
So this last week, I had the opportunity to attend the League of Oregon Cities Annual Conference. It was a great networking and learning opportunity for myself. I took some very informational classes, and I was definitely captivated by some of the speakers. As a matter of fact, I copied one of the handouts, and I thought I just might share it with everybody, if you wouldn't mind passing that down. I'd sure appreciate it. And it was actually one of the very first sessions that I took, and it was called The Counselors Workshops. You got to split off, the mayors went to one group, and the councilors went to the other. And this was one of the handouts from that first session. But basically, the gist of the whole session was that we have more commonalities than differences, and we looked at age, we looked at generations, race, you know, everything. And what it all boiled down to is, you know, that we need to be respectful of one another, and that really what citizens want from us is they want for us to get along. And that hit home. And there are some components to this that I thought were, were great. So the first one is model the way, inspire a shared vision, challenge the process, enable others to act, and encourage the heart. And then in the commitment part, it goes into more detail as to what these things mean. Again, this hit home for me, and it was inspiring for me, and I hope that, if you guys have questions, or I hope that some of this may, you might find meaning in this also. One of my biggest takeaways, though, was some of the innovative things that other cities were doing, and how they're leveraging their community. And I thought that I would just share some of the highlights of some of the big things that were happening. One is happening in Vanden, Oregon, and it's called Face Rock Creamery Cheese Factory. Basically, what it was, it was a collaboration between the city government and private citizens, or private enterprise, coming together to rehab an area of town and truly make it a landmark for their community. So they used some urban renewal funds to install underground utilities and drainage. These are all city funds that were used. They relocated and upgraded the, an entrance road. They installed the public parking lot. They installed sidewalks. They made a small tourist park, and they constructed some public restrooms. And of course, the main function of all this was to increase the tourism in the city of Vanden. The project was made possible through a successful public-private partnership involving public financing for public improvements, with private sector financing for the building, construction, and business operation. It was fabulous. And the community support for this was phenomenal. And, you know, I can't help but think how we might, as a council, work towards something of this nature. A couple other things that I took away was volunteers in police service at Central Point. And Chief, maybe you might know something about this. But what they did over there in Central Point was they had 18 to 30 volunteers go through a police academy. They provide assistance by patrolling areas, and they kind of are the eyes and ears of the city. They help with clerical work, filing data entry. They do a perimeter control. They visit citizens who are most vulnerable and lonely. They have a police chaplain program, and just significant other things that they do for the community. They logged about 44,587 hours of community service hours, to the tune of about $902,000 if you were to give them compensation for the work that they had done. Again, I thought that was remarkable. And then finally, I'll just hit on one other thing that I thought was great, which was a budget report that was done for the citizens of Florence. Have you seen this? They made it extremely easy for the citizens, and I actually brought a copy of it, if you'd like to take a look at it. But I brought a copy of it on, you know, ours is a 150-page document that frankly is quite difficult to read. And if you are not familiar with how to read a budget, it could be quite difficult. So it's like four or five pages, and it cuts it down. It's got pictures, it's got graphics. It was very, very user-friendly, and I think when we talk about transparency, that's a good way to be transparent, is to make it user-friendly. All right, so there's a couple of other things that I thought were absolutely fantastic, and I'll share with you guys a little bit later. I also wanted to mention that there is, for my fellow councilors, the League is looking for some policy committee members on things like community development, energy, finance, human resources. There's just a plethora of different, so if you're interested in getting more involved, there's opportunities out there, so check out the League website. I also learned at the conference, I wasn't aware of this, that there is discussion on capping or eliminating the tax exempt status for municipal bonds. Is everybody aware of that? So this really could have a detrimental effect here for our city government, because, you know, that we use bonds to fund our roads and our schools and create economic growth. So there was a petition going around at the conference, and they had asked for our participation in that. So I'd encourage you to take a peek at that, and write your federal legislators, and share your opinion on how you feel about that. And that's all I, oh, actually, I do have one more thing. One more. And that is, up in Seattle, the National League of Cities is having the national conference in Seattle. And they are offering for us, for city councilors, a $95 opportunity to go for one day on Friday, the 15th. So if you're interested, I would encourage you, they also, it's a week-long, it's a week-long conference, but I'd encourage my fellow councilors to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Quimby.
The day after our last council meeting, two weeks ago, we had a Park Recreation Advisory Committee meeting, and there was a little frustration among the members about the inability to get recommendations pushed forward to council and heard by council, or considered by council. As Sam had mentioned earlier, there is going to be a joint work session, I guess, with some committee members, and the information that they've put forward for recommendations is going to be heard. One of the things, obviously, was the replacement of playground equipment at Park Cleone, and I'm pleased that that is one of two things on this list of council goals that was accomplished. Just an update on what's happened, and we didn't meet for the first time until March, and so we've had six months to get up to speed with multiple new members and see what's going on, and take a look at our past. And the playground equipment at Cleone, missing for 13 months, was not only a council goal of mine, but also the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee, and obviously, that's been done. There's a park, an open space master plan that was last updated in May of 2001, and a recreation plan that was updated, I believe, in August of 2002. And nothing's been done since then. Typically, we try to do that every five years, and it looks like there was an effort began in 2007, but it wasn't completed, so the PrAC is in process of doing that now, one park at a time. One of the things that they recommended was that some initial things be addressed, that they felt were deficiencies immediately before continuing on with the one park at a time plan that we've done in the past, and that was some benches at certain parks, some doggy pots, they're called, for pet owners, and also the thought of putting playground structure in Lake Shore Park. Obviously, the plan that's being worked on now is to finish Park Cleone. I did want to say, I'm happy to see that the city's website is now showing relevant park information. PrAC had recommended to staff to put that up. I was just appointed to this committee in February or January of this year, and like I said, we didn't meet for the first time until March, but I think we've accomplished a lot. I've been pretty supportive of the new members and their new direction and what they're wanting to do. And typically, when we're put on a committee, we stay there until we have a scheduling conflict or something major occurs. So I was kind of cut off. So I was kind of caught off guard and actually completely surprised when we got a updated list of city council committees. I had no warning whatsoever, no previous discussion, to find that after being on this committee for a mere six months and being the committee that completed one of two goals for the council goals list, that I have been replaced. And I don't understand why that is. I've been successful in supporting the members and regaining lost ground with the missing equipment from Park Cleone. And so I'm wondering how it benefits the citizens of Fairview and what's the value of removing me from this committee at this time, Mr. Mayor? I'm actually quite shocked that this occurred without any prior discussion and no warning whatsoever.
The meeting prior to that, I mentioned something about it at the workshop. I did announce it. And everyone got moved just about. Counsel Barton Mullins.
I just have one real quick thing I wanted Mr. Berry to know, that I saw one of his workers in a truck driving, he drove by my house, and there's a little side street that I can see from my house, and in the side street, there was a cup, like the Big Gulp thing? Is that what? Okay. Anyway, sitting in the middle of the road, this gentleman stopped his truck, got out, and picked it up, and put it in the back of his truck, and took it away. And I just thought, wow, there is somebody that's really proud of his city. He was just a worker, didn't need to do that, but I wanted to mention it because I was, that was really a good feeling to know that, that he really cared about his city. So I don't know who it was, but thank you, whoever it was.
Okay. Counsel Owen.
Yeah, I have nothing to say.
Okay. And Counsel Prom.
Yes, Counselor Owen wanted to, wanted me to bring up a new controversial topic this evening. I don't have any.
Nothing?
Well, the only thing I have is I am, well, this is going to be a private conversation between the mayor and I about the committee appointments. And, but we're going to have that discussion in private.
Sure. Okay. And I just want to piggyback on Counsel Arnold, said I was there also. She was sprouting a, was it a, okay, what were you wearing that had the new logo of Fairview on it?
Oh, I think I was wearing my jacket.
Jacket. All right. So really appreciate to see that. It was a well-attended conference, and again, they're very worthwhile, and I recommend it highly. So with that, we are ended, and next is a presentation with Counsel, or from Mr. Do about the Fairview on the Green.
I'm here this evening. My name is Francis Do, and I'm going to be bringing a report on the just-completed Fairview on the Green Festival. 2013 was a year of challenges and triumph, and nothing exemplifies this more than the Seventh Annual Fairview on the Green Festival. Despite its many obstacles, the festival had three goals to achieve this year. Number one, create an organizational group to handle the planning, fundraising, and execution of the festival. Two, raise enough money to put on the festival. And three, actually put on the festival. I am pleased and happy to report that all three of these goals were achieved. First, mahalo to the Friends of Fairview. This is a group of dedicated and passionate people who came together to organize and promote our beloved signature event. Second, I'd also like to mahalo our sponsors, PGE, Comcast, Allwood Recycling, Braches of Portland, Navistar, and the Confederate Tribes. Other notable contributors were Home Depot, the National Guard, Stagecoach Saloon, Tuesdays Project, Dirt and Aggregate, Five Star Storage, and last but not least, our emcee for the event, DJ Scott Tom of Ody's 106.7. A very special and heartfelt mahalo to the Reynolds Youth Football Association, because without their support, we would never have gotten this off the ground. Third, the Seventh Annual Fairview on the Green Festival was bigger and better than last year. We had 10 chili contestants, 26 vendor booths, three exhibition groups, and two great bands that played. This year's festival had a fundraising component to it, and we are pleased to announce that we raised $2,000 for the Reynolds Football Association. Preparation for the Eighth Annual Fairview on the Green Festival has begun. Next year's festival is scheduled for Saturday, August 16, 2014, and we intend to make it even bigger and better. As always, this kind of event can only be successful as a community that supports it. We will be seeking the support of the city as a partner or a sponsor, and we intend to contact the various citizen committees, EDAC, PrAC, the Events Committee, to collaborate on the 2014 festival, and we will also ask for input from our vendors and chili cooks to further improve the event for them. We hope to ensure that the Fairview on the Green is and will always be Fairview's signature event of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the council? Yes, Counsel Owen.
Hey, I just really, no questions, just want to thank you for coming and sharing some of the statistics with us this evening. Sounds like you had a very successful event, and look forward to next year's. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I look forward to also, I miss both events this year, so kind of equal opportunity. And next year, I look forward to seeing it. Counsel Barton Mullins.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, too. I did attend and had a great time, and there's lots and lots of people. Really lucky with the weather, it was beautiful, and I know you guys put a lot of hard work into it, and it was fabulous.
Thank you. I had to leave early because I had a prior commitment, but when I left, it seemed to be going strong.
Yeah, I was there for about eight hours and almost till it ended, and it was strong all day. It was great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there is no other business before the council, so entertain a motion.
And with that, Mayor, I would commend our city administrator for making an agenda that says we'd end at 8 o'clock. It's 8:01, and make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Who's in a second, I'll just favor seeing by by saying aye.
Aye.
We are passed, and we are adjourned.
We're in trouble now.